Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Start with a quick roll call. Sean Ascom.
Hey, guys.
John, Jackie Bados. Wendy McStudis.
Hello.
Chris Peterson yet? No. Mike Payne.
Present.
Maria Capriola.
Hello.
Hi. Mike Liddon.
Here, present.
All right, Chief Boulder.
Good evening.
Chief Jeff Shea.
Here.
Amy Meriwether.
Yeah.
And Tom Fitzgerald put us on the air, so I know you're here.
Here.
Good. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks are supportive. I wanted to see if we could add an item to tonight's agenda. This would be item G under Selectmen Action, an LGBTQ Pride proclamation for Pride Month.
Move that.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll add that item to the agenda. Thank you. And we will begin tonight with a public hearing. It's on the disposition of an open space parcel located at the rear of 133 Holcomb Street. The property owner contacted the town regarding the potential sale of the parcel. While this public hearing is specific to the sale of of open space, the same property owner has been involved with discussions with the town concerning the purchase of an easement along Route 315 to accommodate the construction of a bike path to Curtis Park. The discussion of the easement prompted the property owner to request purchasing a portion of open space behind his home. And a public hearing is a part of the process. And notice for the hearing was published twice in the Hartford Current and also in the Valley Press. So I will begin by reading some, a few of the letters, and then I'll then I'll start tag teaming it with Sean Ascom. So we solicited a public comment to be sent to our town clerk, Erica Butler, which is the way that the public is able to participate in our meetings now, now that we're on Zoom. So for hearings such as this or for public audience, anyone can send an email to ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov. And we were taking these really up until just about the last hour. So the first email that I'm going to read is from a number of people. John Gooch, Margaret Gooch, Karen Cordner, Bill Cordner, Patricia Piano, Jane Moose, Lee Peters, Susan Fitzgerald, Camilla Thompson, Steve Noble, James Moody, Sarah Burrows, Diana Moody, and Elizabeth, and Robert Richards. I most strenuously, vigorously, and fundamentally oppose the sale of our land to a private individual. Such relinquishing of property rights, relinquished which financially enrich one individual, should not happen. I'm opposed to the sale of any open space parcel since each parcel is important in the landscape of Simsbury. Further, during this period of public hearing restrictions, this is not the time to facilitate a hearing on so important an issue. Doing so sends a clear message of the town's intention to limit, rush through, cover up, minimize involvement of the taxpaying citizenry, which is utterly counter to the transparency expected, earned, and deserved by those who pay and elect representative officials. So solutions slash alternative courses of action. If the property owner requesting the sale is asking for continued use, which he's already been abusing without it being his property to graze animals and minimal farming, then the town should consider a lease arrangement, perhaps for the ownership's life of this property. A lease arrangement under which no one is harmed or disproportionately benefited would avoid the establishment of a precedent for sale of open space. Leasing with restrictions for proposed use is consistent with the area's current existence as a vital wildlife corridor and currently existing natural space buffers. It would also allow the town's representatives and taxpayers to monitor use more closely. In closing, I entreat all involved to cease immediately, all slash any consideration slash negotiation to sell the land or do anything to reduce the remarkably valuable, nay vital, existence of this slash these forest spaces. Failure to do so will irrevocably undermine the legitimacy of elected representatives whose existence is predicated on the requirement to serve the collective townspeople to whom they are ultimately answerable. This next email comes from Dave Chase. I am against the town buying land from a private owner to create a land swap and/or to alter the original regulations under which it was created. A leasing arrangement with clear stipulations for use would be much better and would avoid setting a precedent. And this this next one is from Susan Messino, and then Sean, I'll ask you to read the next one. From Susan Messino, to the Board of Selectmen, please do not talk in general terms about orphaned parcels that have no value or about open space as disposable. This does not match science or public opinion. These pieces of value as corridors, a buffer, some greenery, pollinator areas, improved real estate values, local energy, sighting, a future community garden or community forest, a natural place to explore, protection for wetlands or vernal pools, paths to connect us to each other. There's plenty of published research on this. These small pieces are an essential part of the Simsbury landscape, regardless of public access. Not something we should be giving away or called disposable as a way to justify this transaction. Simsbury residents have been very clear in survey after survey how much they care about open space. To say or act otherwise ignores the consistent and clear information we spent taxpayer money paying consultants to acquire multiple times via a charrette process, phone surveys, online surveys, in-person, public comments at public meetings over many years. It was also disturbing to me and others to hear town leaders say this is a good idea because it is Steve Antonio. We all love Antonios and the Oldwell, but this is not personal, and personal relationships should not be the basis for decision-making regarding assets in the public. Also, there's no question that the East Coast Greenway improves local businesses. A detailed analysis can be found here at Conservation Tools, and there's a link in this email. This has been proven over and over again. Claiming otherwise is not credible. As a member of Open Space, I voted no in March. I am still not in favor of this. Transactions like this are perfectly acceptable between private businesses, but not with public assets. It is not acceptable that the financial and legal details have still never been disclosed. These were promised prior to this hearing. How can we have a public hearing without the public having this information? If the town is selling land, it should be via an open process with a reason for selling it and an open process for bidding on it, as well as legal costs, et cetera. If we move forward as is and dispose of this land, we will have ignored and overlooked existing policy on disposition of open space and previous research in town, ignored illegal use of town land, neglected to consider the permanent change in land use rights and reduce taxes during the negotiations, not done true due diligence on legal costs and processes or future value of the property based on these expanded rights and favorable tax status. Mischaracterized the referrals of three land use boards as positive when they were either mixed or simply not negative due to no basis to deny. This is not positive. These referrals were neutral or mixed. Mischaracterized the landowner as having maintained the land. Who wrote this word on the agenda? Maintaining land that does not belong to you is called encroachment if it is without explicit permission of the landowner. If permission was given, I retract this point. And seven, pushed through during a pandemic while everyone is completely and otherwise occupied. As the other part of the swap, the easement for the bike path, we are paying nearly the full amount and will improve their business. I'm all for paying a fair and full price for the easement, and I'm not in favor of tying this land to that transaction, especially when there has not been full disclosure. But no doubt the landowner is a smart business person. It is a great opportunity for him to materially and permanently improve his properties and receive money for it. I would have asked the same. Why not? When you look at the whole picture, this has not been an open process, and it sets a bad precedent for many reasons stated above. A lease resolves most of them and can forgive the others and is already generous. It does not permanently change the zoning or incur legal costs of a conservation easement. My position is that town assets should never be sold without a full and transparent process so the public can comment on the full information at a public hearing. Respectfully submitted, Susan Messino. So Sean, I'll ask you to read the next letter, please.
All right, and I'm starting with Lisa Antonio's letter, right here?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So this is from Lisa Antonio. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion regarding the purchase of an orphaned parcel behind 133 Holcomb Street, Simsbury. I moved into town back in 1968 and grew up surrounded by the beauty of our fields, forests, and farmland around town. I have a deep respect and appreciation for preserving open spaces and retaining that beauty for future generations. However, I'm surprised to learn that an orphaned parcel cutting through our backyard, there was an orphaned parcel cutting through our backyard. This is an interesting story as to how that orphaned parcel came to be deeded to the town. It began with an old zoning ordinance that has since been substantially modified to alleviate its rigid demands in lieu of responsible understanding and ultimate benefit to the town. Back in 1997, the property was divided into smaller sections so my husband could afford to purchase the land in stages. The landowner at the time was furious with the town's unfair zoning rule forcing 20% of the land to be deeded to the town due to a unique situation where the buyer would purchase sections of the land over time as he could afford it. Note, this zoning rule was later significantly modified. As such, she intentionally made the 20% parcel a zigzag crooked finger shape through her backyard with the exception that the town could never receive any benefit in its ownership, and she was right. Excuse me, the expectation that the town could never receive any benefit in its ownership, and she was right. The wildlife quarter runs near our property, but since this orphaned parcel since has the original chain link fence from when it was one singular parcel, no wildlife is able to access it. It is also worth noting that there is no street or walking access to this orphaned parcel that extends into our backyard. We have since had the opportunity to acquire the land on the other side of this orphaned crooked figure parcel in our backyard. Prior to this, it didn't matter if we had direct ownership. It didn't matter if we had direct ownership, but now it has become an obstruction and a nuisance hindering our ability to enclose an additional acreage, creating a safe pasture for our sheep to graze upon. We want to do the right thing and address the issue with full disclosure and transparency. We are supporters of open space and participation and their protection. The town's acquisition of more open space is exciting and should be based on maximizing the benefits to our town or retaining bizarre-shaped, no benefit orphaned parcels for no good reason. Then we will never sell an orphaned parcel because it's open space. In my humble opinion, a closed-minded, rigid way to approach these unique situations. Our town is governed by intelligent elected officials who can fairly weigh all sides of a debate requiring a vote. Each orphaned parcel has a story of its own, and the private property owner should have the right to tell that story, be heard by the town, including open space advocates, and grant reasonable consideration for their unique circumstances at hand. By allowing my family the right to purchase the orphaned parcel in our backyard, the town loses nothing, but instead gains the ability to bring this parcel back onto the tax rolls. In addition, my family embraces placing a deed restriction on the orphaned parcel guaranteeing its open space nature into perpetuity. Open spaces in the town of Simsbury should be managed intelligently with clear considerations to the benefits they bring. This will lead to more optimal open spaces that preserve character and beauty. Of our town, our wildlife quarters provide community enjoyment. Orphaned parcels, especially the one behind my house, our unique situation is due to the way in which they were deeded to the town in the first place and for the purpose they now serve. Any resolution of this matter would set no precedence as each orphaned parcel has its own story. This is the story of our orphaned parcel, that crooked figure behind 133 Holcomb Street that is hindering the interconnected activity of our land, hindering our sheep from grazing freely on that land that once belonged to our predecessors as one lot. There is no rhyme or reason for the town of Simsbury to retain orphaned parcel in our backyard. After all, there is A, no public access, B, no benefit such as town character preservation, C, no ability to collect taxes, D, no wildlife access, and E, no interference with the wildlife quarter. For these reasons, we respectfully ask you to vote yes to allow my family to purchase this orphaned parcel with a deed restriction that guarantees its protection from development forever and corrects the effects from that outdated zoning rule from the past that no longer makes sense because this is the right thing to do. Thank you for your time and consideration.
This next email comes from Karen Cordner. Regarding the town meeting tomorrow night, I am writing to let you know that I strongly oppose selling the small parcel of land to a resident. While I understand that the potential buyer has been using the land illegally, which is horrible, more importantly, even small parcels are very valuable open space. The win-win solution is to lease the land to the user. Thank you for listening.
All right, this next one is Danielle Diarmo. I am against selling our open space as this sets a very precedent for the town. Each piece of open space has value and is owned by all of us and should not be sold. If someone has been encroaching on that land, then it is even more reason not to sell. Each piece of our open space in town is needed and should be protected and preserved. We have already lost way too much of the town's beauty and rural character with the overbuilding in town. Thank you.
This next one comes from Wanda Coleman. I oppose the disposal of the small parcel of open space. I understand there has not been proper disclosure of promised full information about this before the hearing. Every parcel of open space has great value to the environment, no matter how small.
All right, next one is Katie Galt. I am not in support of selling a piece of town open space to an individual, which would reward them for illegal behavior as well as set a precedent for selling public open space, which should be protected fiercely as natural areas as much as possible. Although this public hearing is scheduled during restrictions due to the COVID-19 virus and as it is not a time-sensitive issue, creates the sense that citizens' input is sought only because of legal requirements. I encourage the town to consider a lease agreement with the individual instead of selling a parcel of open space. The lease agreement should contain restrictions for the proposed use is consistent with the wildlife quarter and natural space buffers that currently exist. It also allows the town to monitor more closely. Please do not take advantage of the pandemic to sell public lands that we all depend on or use as an excuse to be less transparent. Full information that was promised to be disclosed prior to the meeting has not yet been released on specifics of the proposed swap or the financials of it all. As a young Simsbury resident, I'm very disappointed in the town I grew up in, but remain hopeful that we can all do better.
This next one comes from Jan Beatty and Michael Park. We're disheartened to see that the board is considering selling even a small parcel of open land, especially given the likelihood of development unless a deed restriction can be enforced. Open space is inherent to the character of Simsbury, and every opportunity should be taken to maintain what makes Simsbury Simsbury. We oppose the sale of this town land. A much better compromise would be to investigate a lifetime leasing of the property, thereby ensuring the abutting property owner could continue legally to use the property. The town would gain some revenue, and the open space would not be developed. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, this next one is from Ika Scully. I am opposed to the town selling or swapping open space to a private landowner. Leasing the land makes better sense. Thank you.
This next email comes from Vitaly Zolkovsky. I'm opposed to the sale of any open space parcel in Simsbury. I consider every open space to be valuable and not orphaned land. I urge you to please stop any consideration and negotiation to sell open space land.
Next one is Lori Stethers. I'm writing to strongly object to the sale of town open space to a private individual. Open spaces in Simsbury are one of the defining features that give Simsbury a whirl rather than suburban feel. Open spaces make Simsbury a desirable place to live. Open spaces protect wildlife, providing a safe space for them to live and provide wildlife quarters. Each and every existing open space is important to maintaining these positive attributes of living in Simsbury. By executing this sale during this time when town meetings and public hearings are held in a non-standard fashion or not held at all, it is making a significant change to our town without providing citizens the full ability to be heard before the decision-making process is completed. Conducting the property sale during this time smacks of the kind of backdoor dealings that I do not expect to see in Simsbury. I strongly urge you to stop this land sale and conduct open public hearings when townspeople are able to attend in person. This transparency is necessary to retain our trust in Simsbury's government and enable all voices to be heard.
This next email is from Joanne Dombrosky. Please do not destroy our forest. We live here and pay taxes in part for the bucolic beauty. This is outrageous to effectively give away our trees, trails, and animal habitat for a few bucks. Who allowed this decision? I do not want this to transpire.
Next one's from Linda Goodman. Good evening. This email is to express my objection to the idea of selling open space. I'm a Simsbury resident for 28 years. The beauty and preserved natural space in this town was the deciding factor in our decision to buy our home here. Keep the open parcels safe so that families will want to live here. Thank you.
Lynette Arnold writes, during this period of public hearing restrictions, this is not the time to allow a hearing on so important an issue.
Arlene, next one's from Arlene Zapilli. I oppose the sale of public land to benefit his or her own interest, and to do this during COVID with no public access makes it even worse.
This next email is from Sue Brackwoods. To the Board of Selectmen, I strongly object to the town selling, trading, leasing, or giving away any of our open space. In the matter of the open space property abutting 133 Holcomb Street, it would set a very bad precedent and possibly encourage other people to use for their own purposes town-owned open space that's adjacent to their property. As more and more of our land has developed, even small patches of wild land increase in importance. Protecting them may be especially urgent as they tend to be more threatened by clearing and/or degradation than larger patches. Those patches near or adjacent to developed areas may preserve species and habitats not well represented in large conservation areas. Environmental conditions that make a place ideal for residential development and farming may also be ideal for some species that are less likely to thrive in sites that aren't suitable for development. That much of their habitat has already been severely altered or destroyed means that what's left may be crucial for their survival here. It may support the last individuals of species whose habitat types have been largely lost to development. So small remnant patches of wild land should be highly valued. Together, they could be considered a nature reserve system, a special archipelago of the wild, which could include small, special places all over town. They're likely to be refuges for species whose original habitat has disappeared around them. In fact, one of the species is us. People who spend time in our wild places feel that these places make a major contribution to the quality of life by enhancing their physical and mental health. As our town population continues to decline, more of these quiet places, not fewer, will be needed to continue to offer these important benefits. Please do not sell, trade, lease, give away, or otherwise dispose of any of our open spaces.
Excellent from Anita Scapino. I have been a citizen of Simsbury for nearly 30 years and fell in love with this town in large part because of its bucolic beauty. The forested areas, small farms, and lovely open spaces spoke to my soul then, and they still do. I cherish them, and they contribute greatly to my serenity and joy. I therefore most vigorously oppose the proposed sale of our land to a private individual, one who, I am informed, has been encroaching and using this land parcel illegally for some time. I oppose the sale of any open space parcel since each one is important in the landscape of Simsbury. Every little piece of land makes a valuable contribution to the overall lovely fabric of this town. The relinquishing of town property rights to financially enrich one individual must not happen. Furthermore, currently there are legislative mandated restrictions on public hearings, which makes this a poor time to hold a hearing on so important an issue. Doing so sends a message that the town's intention is to rush this action through and limit citizen involvement, which is utterly counter to the transparency deserved by those who pay taxes. Elect representative officials. The following thoughtful solutions, alternative courses of actions, are not my own suggestions, but were offered by a fellow concerned citizen. If the property owner requesting the sale is asking for continued use, which he has already been abusing without it being his property to graze animals and minimal farming, then the town should consider a lease agreement, perhaps for the ownership's life of this property. A lease agreement under which no one is harmed or disproportionately benefited would avoid establishment of precedent for sale of open space. Leasing with restriction for the proposed use is consistent with the area's current existence as a vital wildlife quarter and current existing oh boy, I lost it. Current existing, sorry, natural space buffers. It would also allow the town's representative and taxpayers to monitor the use more closely. Too many screens.
Are we going to finish the letter, Sean? I got it.
No, I got too many darn screens open. Sorry. I entreat all involved to cease immediately. Any consideration to sell this land or take any action will harm the valuable and vital existence of this open space. Thank you. Sorry.
All right, this next email is from David Galt. I strongly oppose the selling of the small lot of open space to Steve Antonio. He has been illegally encroaching on this land for a number of years. We should not be rewarding his illegal behavior with a sweetheart land deal. Further, I believe it is ill-advised to run the bike path down 315, requiring the purchase of an expensive easement from Mr. Antonio. One alternative would be to run the bike path down Walcott Road instead. It appears to me that the proposed bike path route down 315 would be habitually flooded, requiring extensive ongoing maintenance.
Next one's from Heather Everstike. Good evening. I am opposed to the sale of any open space. Open space needs to be respected, treasured, and protected. A lease agreement with use restrictions could be a suitable solution. Kind regards.
This next email is from Stephen Antonio. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide some further insight and transparency into what I'm trying to do in regards to the orphaned parcel located in our backyard at 133 Holcomb Street. There are 22 orphaned parcels in Simsbury, according to the P O C D Open Space Plan. I believe every orphaned parcel has a story, and while I do not know the stories behind other orphans, I do know the story of our orphaned parcel. As you might know, I'm a lifelong resident of Simsbury. In the summer of 1997, I happened along a house for sale on Holcomb Street and instantly fell in love with it. The house sat on six fenced-in acres and as such was valued higher than my budget would allow. I worked with the Milliken family who owned the house on how I might be able to still pursue its purchase. Their idea was that I could purchase the house and subsequently purchase the land around the house over time as I could financially afford to do so. It was a shock to the Milliken family that the town of Simsbury demanded 20% of the property be deeded to the town as a condition of slicing the property into three individual parcels. This was the result of a town zoning stipulation that was later deemed egregious, unfair, and its blanket approach, and has since been modified. But grudgingly, the Millikens accepted this condition, as there were no options at that time, and we moved forward. Out of spite, the Millikens allotted a strip of land that was crooked, narrow, and randomly sliced to be the area that was conveyed to the town per this new modified and somewhat nullified zoning rule. I've since purchased two of these land parcels around our house. We're also under contract to purchase the land directly behind our house, preparing to close later this year, resulting in this orphaned parcel becoming a strip of land that runs down between two parcels that I own on either side of it. At this time, we would like to complete the original property line by absorbing our orphaned parcel through a purchase from the town. This will allow a seamless transition between our land so that we might fence it in for our sheep. In addition, we are agreeable to placing a deed restriction on the orphaned parcel, guaranteeing that the open space nature of the parcel will remain into perpetuity and permanently protected from ever being developed. It is worth noting that such restriction exists on that parcel today. Last year, the town approached us with their plans to place a greenway path for public use along all the frontage of our commercial property at 20 Tariffill Road, more commonly known as the Oldwell Tavern. My initial reaction was a resounding no thank you as this plan would not only affect all of the street frontage of a commercial property, but also will directly impact and reduce our customer parking. After careful consideration, we came to accept the greater public good this greenway path would bring to our community and agreed to move forward, conditional that we could move forward with the purchase of the orphaned parcel in our backyard. We were advised that these two transactions should be separated, yet worked on concurrently. The following steps were provided as a path to reabsorb our orphaned parcel. One, make sure all abutting property owners are okay with the transaction. A, this is ironic as I am the only abutting private property owner on three sides of it. B, regardless, I did speak with one and only other neighbor on my side of the street, and they are okay with it, especially in light of it having no effect on their own property as we are not pursuing acquiring any portion of this orphaned parcel other than the area behind our own home. C, since then, I have also spoken to every neighbor on the opposite side of the street. They have all confirmed their find with my taking private ownership of this orphaned parcel. And D, neighbors that were delighted to learn that we would be placing a conservation easement on the parcel where none currently exists. Two, send written communication to town manager requesting an opportunity to purchase the orphaned parcel. A, a letter sent on May 28, 2019. Three, meet with the town manager, first selectman, assistant first selectman, town planner, town engineer, as well as parks and recreation to discuss. A, meeting commenced and unanimously decided to move forward with step four. Four, agree on which committees to present to and submit a referral. A, the planning commission. Discuss the referral pursuant to the Town Code and Connecticut General Statutes 824 at their February 11, 2020 meeting. Two, the commission found that the sale was consistent with Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 and supported the concept of selling a portion of the open space. In considering these findings, the commission discussed how there is no public access to this open space parcel and how the town is not maintaining the property due to its blocked access. B, Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission discussed the referral at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting, and the commission reviewed the sale along with the findings from the planning commission. In general, the commission supported the sale with a consideration that a deed restriction be placed on the area that no new structures will be built in the area of space. C, the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee discussed the referral at their March fourth, twenty twenty meeting. The committee issued a favorable recommendation after a four-to-two vote. The positive referral was made with the consideration that a deed restriction be placed on the portion of open space to be sold, that no new structures be built within the area. Some of the members felt that instead of selling the property, that the town should investigate a potential life use lease with the abutting property owner instead of selling the property. As a note, we are not interested in this option. Unless the town is only interested in a lifelong term on the twenty Terriffill Road parcel, it would be unfair to have one part of this exchange expire. Five, complete an independent appraisal, an appraisal completed by Stephen C. Miller of Calciano, Stern, and Miller, appraisal of Bristol, Connecticut. Two, an appraisal accuracy validated and verified by the town appraiser. And six, forward proposal to the Board of Selectmen. The board met on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty and referred this matter to a public hearing per policy. As you can see, I have proceeded on a transparent resolution to the status of our orphaned parcel. It's my hope that the Board of Selectmen can make an educated and rational decision as to the path that best serves our community as they discuss our proposal. On a personal note, I must express my heartfelt frustration and surprise as to the effort a few fellow residents have expressed in opposing the disposition of our orphaned parcel. They're opposed more on their own personal assumptions than actual research or understanding of what the relevant facts are. They fail to see any benefit to the town of our orphaned parcel being reabsorbed into the income-producing tax rolls of our town, while losing nothing in the form of realized open space or opportunity for our community at large. It further exasperates me that the majority of these people neither reside in our area of town or traverse our area in the normal course of their travels. A wise person listens before rushing to judgment, allowing them to make a rational decision, inclusive of research and establishing a dialogue for the best resolution for the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration, Stephen Antonio.
This next one is from Helen Peterson. Good evening. I address my comments to the Board of Selectmen as a resident. As a member of the Open Space Committee, I was unable to participate in person on the matter of one thirty-three Holcomb Street referral on their March fourth, twenty twenty meeting agenda, but responded in part by letter and copied the Board of Selectmen. The town has expressed interest in purchasing an easement along Terriffill Road from the abutting commercial property, necessary to complete an East Coast Greenway spur. The town should conduct this transfer negotiation completely as an independent project and pay full market value to the commercial owner for that easement. Most unfortunately and ill-advised, this transaction was coupled with another transaction between the town and the same property owner to sell and convey one-plus acre of publicly held open space abutting his one thirty-three Holcomb Street property. The action is ill-advised, as it will establish a damaging precedent for the town into the future. There is a process to follow in this association of open space land clearly established in town policies. One, Town Code. DL Disposition List, Chapter two, twenty-one dash eight, Process and Criteria for Disposition of Open Space Land Added, two, twenty-two sixteen. Two, Open Space Stewardship Policy is adopted by the Open Space Committee, April sixth, twenty sixteen, Section Disposition. If this prescribed policy process was properly followed, I suggest that the Open Space Committee expressly designated by the B O S to advise you in all open space matters would have done its due diligence, the referral properly and transparently vetted, would have then advanced with full guidance through the Conservation Planning and Zoning Commissions, and finally to the B O S for this hearing. It is an individual's right and privilege to enhance his land holdings. Through its prescribed policies procedures, it is a municipality's ethical responsibility and burden to protect the assets held in the public trust. Respectfully submitted.
And this final email comes from Diane Nash. Board of Selectmen, do not endorse the sale of open space parcel at one thirty-three Holcomb Street. Further investigation of this transaction and full disclosure needs to be made. An informed public hearing cannot be conducted without the transparency, especially while live attendance at such public hearing is under the COVID-nineteen guidelines. The subject property has been encroached upon and misused by this applicant as if it were already owned by him, not the town. No fees have been paid to the town for this use, nor penalties or fines levied, and even the words used to present this request, "He has maintained," et cetera, makes it sound like he did a good thing. As a reward for misuse, the town of Simsbury is considering the sale of this parcel to him. At what price? Who determined fair market value and future market value with this enhancement to the overall property at one thirty-three Holcomb Street? Was this parcel put out to bid? Should we assume one thirty-three Holcomb Street property will be reassessed for the increase in value and taxed accordingly? What and why is the precedent here? Why the haste in bringing this forward now? Is it a way to circumvent the regulations governing an exchange, a quid pro quo? And at what price, for the extension of the bike trail in front of the restaurant owned by this applicant, which of course will be enhanced by such a bike path connection? What is the price we will pay for this more favorable bike path connector? And why would the town of Simsbury assume the entire burden for this enhanced trail extension? This referral, when it was brought to the Open Space Committee, recessed to executive session. What information is there that could not be shared with the public? This is not the way business should be conducted in the town of Simsbury, never was. Stop this now before establishing a damaging precedent. Thank you. So, I know I joined my fellow members in thanking every single person who participated in this public hearing by sending in their comments. I wanted to. I wanted to, I do not anticipate that the board is going to take any action on this tonight, but I did want to see if there would be a motion to close the public hearing. Sean, you were on mute. Did you move that?
Sorry, I'll move it.
I thought we talked about having it open for more than one meeting.
Yeah, I think that was something that we had talked about and something we still can do if we think that there is additional comment or if there were points raised tonight that we think would be valuable to keep the hearing open. So, I'm definitely willing to entertain that conversation if there's others that feel differently.
Well, to Jackie's point, a lot of the comments tonight was that there was no real public audience. It was all done via Zoom, and I don't think we're going to be open for the public till later this summer, but that's something we should consider.
Yeah, Eric, if I could, I mean, I don't disagree, except we just passed a hundred million dollar budget with a six-year vote of the Board of Finance, so. Not saying that one is equal to the other, but this is how we're operating the government, and it's not our choice. But again, our tax bills were just decided, you know, with no referendum and, you know, a Zoom meeting. So, I hear what people are saying, but I respectfully disagree that there's not transparency. There's as much possible transparency as we're legally allowed to have right now. And again, we passed a hundred million dollar budget with the same level of transparency.
Well, I just want to clarify, I didn't mean that we weren't being transparent, but I guess I don't know that with the budget, we had a strict timeline with this. I'm not sure what the timeline is.
That's fair.
Line, Eric?
I'm sorry, say that again, Jackie?
Is there a timeline?
No, I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak for the Antonios, but I think that. I mean, there is no, there is no, you know, reason from a public perspective why we need to close the public hearing tonight and move forward.
I think I'm in favor of keeping it open so that the dialogue does remain and people feel like they can comment if they don't feel like they've had the opportunity so far.
Eric, this is Mike Payne. I would agree with the point that a couple people have made. The perception is that they haven't had enough time to be involved in the process. I absolutely agree with Sean. These are beyond extraordinary times. It has been transparent. There were some questions that people said they did not get answers to. I am more comfortable leaving it open. If those are questions we truly can answer or get them information or have information available, I think we should do that. And because there is not a timeline, it isn't like we have to get something done before it snows. God knows that sounds awfully good today, but let's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Chris?
Hey, guys. Good evening. Eric and Sean, thank you for reading through all of those. Yeah, I want to agree with Sean. I really am disheartened to hear people, I think, what they're doing is to a certain extent, which are commingling what may have been viewed as the process of dialogue or process of review, as it may have been preferred to have moved through various components of government and town, blending that with the constraints from which we are currently operating under. Those need to be, those need to be separated entirely. And I would, I take, I am with Sean a hundred percent that we, this is the process we're in. It has nothing to do with any other, any other agenda or, and every other item that we're taking and pushing forth is going through the exact same process. So, let's take those two things apart. I, Jackie's point, I agree. I think this is also the first time that the Antonios have really put forth some dialogue into the conversation. And I think it may allow now, whether, I don't, I have no, I don't know what the perfect timeline is, whether it's a week or it's one meeting or it's five. That's, I'm not here to decide that. But maybe there is a reason to have this open for some period longer for that very reason that I believe that the Antonios, the interested parties, have put forth some words on their position, which would give some people additional time to respond to it, understanding their motivation and not necessarily looking at this from the mouthpiece of just one subset of our community. So, that to me, there's some value in that because then those parties may be able to hear additionally from other individuals of how they are feeling about this issue. So, that's my.
Okay, thank you.
My vote.
Was there anyone on the board who did not get into the conversation? It's looking, okay.
I don't know where you're on my question, Eric.
Okay, if we, if we were to keep the public hearing open, I think it would be wise to provide a date for when it would come up again on our agenda. Would our next meeting, July thirteenth, be reasonable?
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Okay, is there, Maria?
So, for the agenda later this evening, July thirteenth, if you support sending the wildlife ordinance to public hearing, that would be July thirteenth, which just means you would have two public hearings at the same evening. It's not, you know, impossible. It just might not be ideal. And I do anticipate that our meetings will still be in this virtual mode for July thirteenth as well.
Yeah, my only argument for maybe not having them on the same night is length, other than that.
Yeah, I probably have the same mindset there, Sean, and like, this is for the wildlife ordinance, which you and I have hold dear to our heart. And not that we would want to have it be the focus of the one-night meeting, but I think this will be the first time that really the public is going to be, tonight will be the first time the public sees it as a chance to have some dialogue and thought around it. So, maybe giving its, you know, having it to be allowed to have its own sort of focus would be more responsible to it versus it commingling with another land use type conversation. I would be opposed, propose to move it to a separate evening.
I'm fine with however everybody wants to do it. And again, from my experience on here, we're going to get yelled at because it's in July. We're going to get yelled at because school's out. We're going to get yelled at because it's in the summer. So, we've, whenever we have a public hearing in the summer, we get yelled at for that, so.
Are there, from an agenda perspective, Maria, are there any concerns about the August meeting? If we were to move it to August?
No, you know, the only concern, again, would be at this time, and I did recently speak with the Freedom of Information Commission staff. You know, we're not sure how long we'll be operating in this virtual mode due to the pandemic. We haven't heard anything differently. So, at this time, you know, at a staff level, we're just sort of planning to be in this virtual mode, I would say, at least through the summer. It's always possible those restrictions could be lifted sooner. So, for the August tenth meeting, again, I don't believe we have another public hearing scheduled lots of time. It's just that we still may be in a virtual mode.
Okay, okay. Do we need a motion? For keeping the public hearing open, or would we just not take action right now?
Yeah, I think if you could take a motion, continuing it to the date and time that you want to schedule it for. So, for example, if you did want to do the August tenth meeting at, say, six P M., you could take a motion to continue the hearing to that date and time.
So, I'm moving that we continue this public hearing until August tenth at six P M.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sorry, what was that?
Oh, my gosh, I've got an Alexa device that's talking to me right now.
Tell Jeff Bezos we're doing the best we can here.
I'm going to have to find another room. Okay. We're going to move now to public audience, and there are are two items in public audience. Let me just turn that on my computer. Here we go. Okay, the first is from Judy and John Schaefer. This was meant to be read at a previous meeting. We urge you not to schedule a public hearing for this issue. The town should not be disposing of its open space. Town-owned open space is a major contributor to the bucolic atmosphere that draws people here and improves the quality of life for our residents. When a parcel of parkland is sold or built on for some good reason, that sets a precedent, which leads to the loss of another parcel for another good reason. Soon, the open space is gone. The town should not reward someone for the inappropriate use of public property. If it's in the town's best interest to allow the use of this land, then it should be leased. That way, the town retains control. We urge you to vote no to the motion to refer the transfer of the parcel of open space at one thirty-three Holcomb Street to a public hearing. This second letter comes from Joan Ko. I recently received my tax bill. There was an increase in my taxes. The collection of taxes and revenues are sent to the town to provide services. The taxpayers have the constitutional right to evaluate the services provided and register concerns about the failure of our government to meet our expectations. On June eleventh, twenty twenty, the Personnel Subcommittee convened to discuss and evaluate extending Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract. First Selectman Eric Wellman and Deputy First Selectman Sean Askam, both on the committee, asked the residents to send their comments to them on their evaluation of Town Manager Maria Capriola. However, the public only received a short synopsis of the comments at the meeting. I asked that my comments be read aloud, and First Selectman Eric Wellman read my comments into the record. These were my comments, asking the Subcommittee not to renew Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract with legitimate concerns about abuse of power, working in a toxic work environment, and alleged unethical behavior. After many decades of promoting a town manager, I feel I was correct in establishing a town manager. Simsbury does need professional management. However, Town Manager Maria Capriola is the wrong person for the job. Simsbury could do better. I'd like to express my concerns that should be reviewed before the Board of Selectmen evaluates Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract. Simsbury is part of a vast complex of towns that rely on reputation to fill jobs. Communities all rely on the same pool of applicants for key positions. Town Manager Maria Capriola has a reputation of creating a toxic work environment with a union filing a municipal prohibited practices complaint against her. This reputation of abuse of power is widespread, leading to high-level applicants not applying to serve the Simsbury community. Town Manager Maria Capriola has abused her power by alienating the Police Commission with questionable opinions from the town attorney. The abrupt resignation of Commissioner Jim Fleming from the Police Commission, stating that he believes in the rule of law, is another indication of Town Manager Maria Capriola's abuse of power. Under the leadership of Town Manager Maria Capriola, there have been many grievances and terminations of employment that are costly in legal fees, defending the town's position when there is no legitimate defense. Instead of streamlining commissions, Town Manager Maria Capriola has instituted over fifty work groups with staff designating time to support these groups and attend meetings. This becomes all-consuming with other impending issues that require professional attention. Many of the meetings are clerked by Many of the meetings are clerked by staff and Town Manager Maria Capriola. That creates a conflict of authority. Our town staff did not sign up for 24/7 employment. The Board of Selectmen are more interested in getting re-elected and tackling the issues in front of them. It's easy to stay with the status quo. It takes courage to vote your conscience. The town has not served well when our elected officials duck the pivotal issues not to offend the vocal constituencies. How can the Board of Selectmen, after reviewing all the facts in good conscience, vote to renew Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract? On June 15, 2020, Town Manager Maria Capriola's daughter freaked out seeing a bear on her property, alerting Town Manager Maria Capriola, who also freaked out, and swiftly sent an email to our animal control officer to immediately come into the office and patrol her neighborhood. This is case number 2206-7 and 2206-9, another example of abuse of power. The proposed ordinance to prohibit the intentional feeding of wildlife should not be enacted because Town Manager Maria Capriola had an incident with a bear. Bears are not predatory animals, and due to increases in housing, bears have moved closer to where their primary habitat used to be. Bears no longer hibernate, and they now roam the areas all year round. The prohibition will not eliminate the bears, but create issues with neighbors and take the police away from medical and aided calls. Recently, there was a Black Lives Matter peaceful protest in front of the Police Department. Many members of the Police Department came outside to make their presence known and talk with protesters. What was astonishing was that Chief Bolter, Lieutenant Sheehan, and Lieutenant Siffo took a knee in front of Town Hall, where the Black Lives Matter protesters were assembled. These officers were in uniform and being paid by the taxpayers to perform their duties, not make political statements. The Simsbury Police Department should remain neutral during protests. The unintended consequences of their actions will not provide all organizations that protest in front of Town Hall the ability to request that Chief Bolter, Lieutenant Sheehan, and Lieutenant Siffo, or any other officer, to take a knee on their behalf. All my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter, at Joan Coe, and on Facebook. And that concludes public audience tonight. We'll now move into my First Selectmen's report, and then follow that with our Town Managers' report. We did want to share that there's a lot of work going on as our staff is making plans to reopen our town facilities with your safety as our top priority. This weekend, the Simsbury Farms Pool opened for the season in a modified capacity. It will only be open to Simsbury residents, and you'll need, you'll now need to register and pay ahead of time. We will not be allowing walk-ups. You can learn more about the specifics on the Parks and Rec website. Our athletic fields are also open this weekend for certain youth sports. Our summer camp started today. The skate park also reopened today. Playgrounds and basketball courts were tentatively, will tentatively be opening on July 6th. The library building is closed, but curbside service is available, and you can access the curbside service form on the library's website. I have received some questions about why we're not moving faster in reopening some of our facilities. All of these plans are being developed in close consultation with the Farmington Valley Health District, and I have full confidence that, that as our staff develops this timeline for reopening, your health and your safety is front and center. Last Friday was a holiday with such significance, yet one that has only risen in the consciousness of many, also known as Emancipation Day, Jubilee Day, and Freedom Day. Juneteenth celebrates the liberation of those formerly held as slaves in the U.S. In these days of social upheaval, a pandemic, and so many extreme challenges, we must remember that we're part of a greater whole. Each choice, each decision, every action has the potential to affect someone else, either positively or negatively. Let us rejoice on Juneteenth, that individuals made the moral choice to fight for the rights of others, but us step up and do the same, remembering it is not just about equality, but it is about humanity. As we reflect on Juneteenth, it's critical that our town and our schools do the hard work to support diversity and inclusion. Earlier this month, Police Chief Nick Bolter and I shared separate video messages with the community describing specific steps that the town is taking in the coming months to move this important work forward. In the next month and a half, our Police Department will be producing a comprehensive report reviewing our use-of-force policy, the eight-can't-wait criteria, and other related policies. This report will be shared with our Police Commission, a board made up of citizens of our town that has governance responsibility over our Police Department. It will help inform the next steps that our Police Department takes and their commitment to serve everyone equitably. Also, at our, at our meeting tonight, the Board of Selectmen will be learning more about a proposal to equip our police with body cameras, a project that is supported by the leadership of our Police Department. Lastly, I wanted to share that at the end of July, the town is planning on hanging a banner over Iron Horse Boulevard to share a message with the community that we stand for inclusion. We're soliciting ideas for what exactly the banner should say, and we invite anyone in the community to share their ideas, or even a fully-fledged design. You can send an email to townmanager@simsbury-CT.gov anytime between now and June 30th. These ideas will be reviewed and vetted by our Spirit Council, which is a group that serves as the diversity champions for our town. So, that's the summary of my First Selectmen's report, and I'll turn it over to Maria for the Town Managers' report.
Eric, can I invoke an important privilege here?
Sure, Sean.
I just, I, I know these are public comments, and we don't respond. But tonight's were particularly personal towards town staff, and especially involving the child of town staff and their personal safety. And I know everyone has their rights, and I respect that, but I also have the right to disagree with an attack on a, on a member of our staff, especially for protecting their child. I read the email to the animal control officer. There's nothing inappropriate or abusive about the request to inform that officer that there was a bear in the neighborhood. And anybody that lives in this town should and would protect their children or other people's children. And again, that was obviously a very scary situation for the Capriola family. And again, I think it's beneath all of us to personally attack any member of the staff.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean. Sean, Eric, can I say something with Chris? Along the same lines, there was a comment or wording in that communication that speaks to abuse. I, I am very concerned with the abuse of information that may be taking place by parties within certain areas of town that are providing that kind of personal information out to people or a person for who the most part is, is not very well-respected by, by and large, within the community. And sharing that type of information with that person is a very, is concerning to me. And I think that's something we should, as leaders, follow up on directly.
I agree. This is Mike with both your statements. And respect is both given and earned by your actions. And I am disappointed that some people have taken the path they have. We are better than that. I'll get off my pedestal.
No, thank you, Mike. Okay, thank you. Maria, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for, for those comments. You know, I really appreciate you making the statement. And, and I'll be candid with the public. My husband and five-year-old and I were in our front yard two Sundays ago and had a very close encounter with a very large bear that was following myself and my five-year-old as we were trying to safely enter our home. We had a very, very difficult time entering our home. It was just a very, very scary incident for us. It was more than just simply observing a bear in our yard. It was a very, again, close encounter that a bear was following us, and we had a very, very difficult time entering our home. So, I think I, you know, informed our animal control officer, as any reasonable resident would. I am a resident of this community, and I certainly don't, you know, believe that I abused my power. And it was very disappointing to have a resident make reference to my five-year-old child and those comments this evening. So, again, I do appreciate everyone's remarks this evening. Thank you. All right, moving on to my Managers' report. So, we have a couple of agendas, agenda additions this evening. Eric mentioned one on our LGBTQ proclamation, so thank you for adding that. We do have a second item that I would respectfully request be added to the agenda. We did receive a number of recommended appointments and reappointments to various committees on Friday afternoon. And so, I would recommend that we add proposed appointments to various boards and commissions under our Appointments and Reappointment section of our agenda this evening. That can be done with a two-thirds vote of the body. And we have updated the packet material online, so those appointments are available online this evening. Under our coronavirus update, I really want to give kudos to our recreation staff, in particular, John Tebow, our Recreation Supervisor, Tom Tiber ski, our Director, and Orlando Cassiano, our Park Superintendent. They just, they and their teams worked tirelessly to get the pool ready for opening day on June 20th. They really did an outstanding job. We are using many modified practices to be in accordance with the best public health advice and guidance that we have available to us at the moment. Our opening day went very well for our two, our two public swim sessions. We had 165 participants for the first session and 166 participants for the second session. And we had WFSB visit us on opening day. They put together a really nice piece that I think very succinctly talks about some of the differences people will see when they do come to the pool, such as pre-registration and things of that nature. So, we have provided a link to that, that clip. We also worked with our local youth sports organizations to get a number of those activities back up and running for June 20th. Many of those groups will be using our athletic fields. So, if you do see some practices or organized play, please know that we worked very carefully, again, with those sports groups on a plan for essentially their reopening. Our Public Health District also reviewed those plans, as did Recreation Staff. We also opened summer camp today with a two-thirds capacity, and we were also able to reopen the skate park today as well. So, tentatively, we are looking to reopen our playgrounds and basketball courts July 6th. We are very hopeful that that will be the case. We cannot say with certainty, and it will depend on, again, public health information that's available to us at the time. The Golf Course Restaurant is currently open for outdoor dining, and we are working with a golf pro shop to reopen for retail purposes. And regarding our other Parks and Rec facilities, at this time, our tennis courts, golf course, parks, open space parcels, and trails do remain open. We are operating by phone, mail, and virtually through our online services, and our town buildings will remain closed to the public at least through July 5th. However, starting today, we have developed a system for accepting appointments with our patrons who really can't conduct business otherwise, again, whether it be virtually by phone, et cetera. So, if you do need to make an appointment with staff, please contact the respective department. We will work through our list of questions for screening folks for health purposes and to see if we can accommodate them with an appointment. I do want to note that face masks will be required of our patrons when they are visiting by appointment. The library curbside pickup program for materials continues to be very successful, and I want to commend the library staff for their very good work with that program. And I may have announced this previously. I know we did talk about it at the Public Safety Committee meeting. But at this point in time, the earliest that we could open our senior center is probably Labor Day timeframe, but it could potentially be the end of the calendar year. And that is really due largely in part to most of our senior center patrons falling into the high-risk category identified by the CDC and other public health officials. And so, again, the advice that we're receiving from those folks is that the senior center will most likely be our last facility, facility to open to the public. Just a reminder that we are not accepting cash payments for the summer. There are a few exceptions, and again, folks should contact staff if that is needed. What we have set up for folks who want to drop off a check is that we do have a secure Dropbox in front of Town Hall. So, if you don't want to mail your payment, but would rather bring it to Town Hall, as you're entering the main entrance, there is a Dropbox, and we've put some pretty bright signage up to say that you can leave your payments there. Regarding our Property Tax Deferral Program, we are now up to 46 approved applications so far, resulting in $349,000 in deferred revenue. So, again, that's about a 90-day time period that people will have to, to make those payments. We are still accepting applications, and they are available on the Revenue Collector's website. We are keeping our meetings close to the public until further notice. This did come up during the public hearing comments earlier. And again, at this point, we are planning, probably most likely, at least until about Labor Day, to be in this virtual mode. If, however, we do receive guidance that we can change that sooner, we most certainly will. With included information, again, just reminding residents how they can help donate to residents in need, as well as an update on our mask program. Something I would just like to point out is we had the largest number of households that we've served yet during the pandemic this past Monday. We served 126 households, which is just really remarkable when you think about, we ordinarily serve 80 households. And this is just also just amazing, and I really want to commend Rachel Loveland, our social, community social worker, for her efforts in coordinating with volunteers to deliver to homebound individuals. And so, of the 126 households we served, we were able to help 28 homebound households as well. Some good news, we have been working with an urgent care facility to provide some local convenient COVID testing here in town. Those dates will be June 29th and June 30th. It will occur in the parking lot of the Simsbury High School. Pre-registration is required, so we will be sending out information very, very soon through our social media accounts with information on how folks can register for those appointments. And lastly, under the coronavirus update, just a reminder, you can go to shop-simsbury.com to see which businesses are open. Sarah Nielsen and the Main Street team have been doing an excellent job updating that for us. A few quick notes from our department. We had our Household Hazardous Waste Collection event last Saturday, June 13th. It is a regional event, and we had a pretty significant uptick in participation. We had over 800 participants. I think it was 842 households total. In a normal event, we have about 600 households. We did have to cancel our last collection event due to the pandemic. So, I do think, talking with staff, that was a big reason why we saw that the increase in participation. But again, it was very successful, and our next event will be October 17th. And just a note from our office, Aquarian Water had informed us that due to below-average precipitation, unseasonably warm weather, and demands on their system, it has been difficult for them to maintain adequate water pressure within the Simsbury system. So, they were asking folks to voluntarily cease irrigation for residential purposes. And the town did cut back on some of its watering as well. So, we want to thank everybody who did that, and would continue, folks, to really do your best to implement voluntary conservation measures. Through our various social media accounts, we do have links to information on how people can reduce their water consumption in addition to slowing the irrigation that they may be dealing on their lungs. Just two other very quick reminders, that the Farmington Valley Visiting Nurse Association is conducting blood pressure and blood sugar screenings every Wednesday now in the parking lot of Eno. There's information there for people who are interested in that service. And last hurrah reminder for dog licenses in June. You are now able to do that electronically, so if you have not yet done that, please do so. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Sorry, it was a bit lengthy, but lots to report with Phase 2 reopening happening.
What's going on?
Thank you.
I wanted to see, is there? Does someone want to get in? Okay, I wanted to see, is there a motion to add three appointments to the bottom of the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Item A, under Selectment Action is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective June 22nd, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $1,889.71, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? All right, that motion passes. Item B is the Proposed Deputy Chief of Police Classification. As you know, the budget for the upcoming fiscal year includes a new position in our Police Department of Deputy Chief. The job, the proposed job description and the salary range in your packet was approved by the Police Commission and then by the Personnel Subcommittee. The salary range being proposed is $122,000 to $128,300, which is consistent with what has been budgeted for the position. I wanted to see either Maria or Chief Bolter, if there was anything you wanted to add before I open it up for questions? Nope? Are there any questions on the proposed salary or the job description?
None at this time.
Okay. Is there a motion effective June 22nd, 2020, to approve the creation of the Position Classification of Deputy Chief of Police and the job description as presented, and further move to approve an annual salary range for the Deputy of Police position of $122,000 to $128,300, which may be amended from time to time through resolutions by the Board of Selectmen?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Um, item C is a supplemental appropriation to the CNR fund, uh, body worn cameras and car cameras. Uh, in your packets tonight is a proposal to equip our police with body cameras. It's a project that our, our police commission and our police department have been supportive of. And in light of national events, there's interest in accelerating this project. Since this is a, a late addition to our packet, I wanted to ask staff to walk through this item. If the board is, uh, is ready to move forward tonight, we can, but we could also, um, wait until our next meeting if we, uh, if we, uh, if people wanted to give it more thought. Or if we just wanted to, um, leave it, uh, for, uh, you know, for more public, uh, comments since this was a late addition. So, um, Maria or the chief, I didn't know which of you wanted to start.
Sure. Thank you, Eric. I'll start. So, um, as you mentioned, um, the body camera project is something that the police commission was supportive of during the budgeting process. Um, it's something that has been very important to the chief and myself as well. Uh, and we're really appreciative to the board of selectmen and board of finance for including it in our five-year capital plan. Um, we had actually included it in year two of the CNR plan. Um, so that would have been for fiscal, uh, not 2021, but fiscal 2122. However, you know, when the chief and I were reevaluating the project, um, we definitely have a strong desire to expedite the project since we do have available funds that would not impact, um, the general fund. Um, and so we really took a, a good look at, um, the initial capital cost, the ongoing maintenance costs, as well as working in a five-year replacement cycle into the ongoing costs as well. And want to thank Amy for her work in helping us with that financial analysis. Um, and I do apologize for the delay in getting the materials to you. We were just trying to button up the financial analysis. So, but I think maybe helpful, um, would be two, two pieces. Um, one would be to have the chief just briefly speak to the project a bit. Um, and then also to have Amy walk you through, um, the motions because there would be a series of motions and transfers, uh, within funds. Um, as well as, um, a recent discovery, um, on historical research and use of the private duty fund. So if that sounds like an okay course of action for you, um, I'll have again, the chief start off with an overview and then have Amy explain the motions.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Maria. Um, so this proposal actually has two different cameras. One is a body worn camera system, which allows every officer to wear a body camera. And it's, uh, the latest technology that automatically uploads to the cloud. It's a very secure way of, of, uh, housing our data. There's a replacement plan, uh, built within the five-year body camera plan. And so the cameras get replaced, um, or initially given to us, uh, at year one. And then at two and a half years they're replaced. Then again, at five years they're replaced. And the reason for that is, um, for the everyday use of the cameras and then upgrades, things change. Currently there is one camera that's being used now. And there's another one that's coming out very soon. So, um, looking at upgrades and technologies, so it allows for that. The second part of the, uh, proposal or the second camera is the replacement of the current in-car camera systems. So they work very similarly, except these, uh, new replacements, the data would also go to the cloud. Um, and they would also have a replacement, um, schedule built into them. So the initial first year purchase and then a replacement again at, at year five. So that replacement plan is very important, not only because, um, the equipment changes, but it also talks about or covers any issues that happen in between. And so we can quickly get a unit to be replaced. And, you know, we have found that the in-car cameras have, um, done well for five years, even though, um, you know, we have sort of thought of the industry standard being much greater than five years. They really have not. We have some current issues that we're dealing with our current in-car cameras now. So this seems to be a very good sort of assurance plan moving forward. Any, any questions or comments about either one of those particulars or can I expand on anything?
Eric, if I could just, chief, thank you and Maria for, for putting this together. This was an issue that our board and the board of finance looked at four years ago, I believe it was, chief.
Four to five years ago, yes.
Five years ago, yeah. Uh, the board of selectmen ultimately did support it, although, um, I did have challenges with that at the time. We were in a different environment and I believe there was some debate over the recommendation and policies and et cetera at the time and, um, and then it ultimately failed at the board of finance level for funding reasons. If I remember serves me, but fast forward to today, we're in much, uh, much different climate, right? And, uh, important and you know, at the time I was misguided in, in, in not understanding the full value of, of these cameras that they're both for the citizens' protection and the officers' protection. So I appreciate you guys reviving this, this issue and not just because of recent events, but because it's a continued way to professionally community police, right? It's a, it's a way to, to make sure that there's the transparency that both your officers want and the public deserves, right? And there's, there's no need for secrets. Um, nobody's trying to do that. So I think this is, this is an important, um, important step forward for us and, um, you know, I know the, the dollars are a lot, um, when, when people look at it. Um, but I think it's important, uh, that we, we, we move forward with this.
I, I just have a, a question of how they're used. Are they always on or is the recommendation to have both cameras always on? Body and car?
Yeah. So, um, there are different policies out there nationwide that the general policy that we have seen more often is that they are automatically turned on, uh, in the cruiser anyways, when the emergency lights or the siren is turned on. And that's currently how ours are set up for the in-car cameras. And for body cameras, it does vary. Um, a lot of places it's completely optional. In other places, um, like the state of Connecticut, when they did offer some funding to support, uh, body cameras, they had a policy that required the, um, activation of the body camera under certain circumstances. And it was basically the default was almost every cert, every encounter with the public, except they, um, listed a series of situations that would not require it where in fact, they did not want you to, uh, videotape some of it. The highly sensitive, very personal, uh, encounters that, that the police officers do often have with people.
So just to add to that, do we, do we have policies planned already or, or you guys will work on that? Once we get the body cameras?
Yeah, no, we will work on that. We do not have policies for the body cameras now. We do have policies for the in-car cameras. And, um, sort of given the, the, um, the environment right now, we will be looking to see if we can review those particular policies and sort of, uh, see if there are any needed changes for those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Eric, um, Maria, both, maybe you guys can both comment on this or, or chief as well, uh, if you're watching this issue. I appreciate that. I, we're probably in the camp of Sean. And I think we've actually talked about the issue of body cameras in the last four years at the borders, like from that conversation. But I'm sort of originally in this, in the same camp likely that Sean was around, um, the, the cost benefit of the, of the, of the system. Certainly as Sean mentioned, I agree. We, you know, it's today is, today is a very different time period that it was than was four years ago. I think it's very, um, you know, it's, it's very interesting to think that for the very reason and probably the likely the one reason that most individuals would probably, uh, would come to mind for most individuals as to why you have body cameras and what could it, could, can it prevent something or could it, or could it, could, could it begin to prevent something, I guess, as part of the conversation? But the, for the very reason that we were thinking along these lines that I, I'm also hopeful based upon, you know, my own comments and previous meetings. I hope that because of the people that we have in our department, um, for the really reasons we're thinking about them. I hope that that never is an issue and we would never need body cameras for the reason that most people identify them for the purpose of today. And I hope with the chief's leadership and the new deputy chief coming on board and the policies and previous, we never get to that point. So my reason for also saying that is there is a conversation occurring at the state level and the federal level at different camps around body cameras and response. So is there, i- is there a, a enough contextual conversations happening out there over the next two weeks, 30 days, six months? That we could actually see funding for them that would participate because we just talked about, again, it's a, be the one who pushes something down the road and something awful happens because we're waiting for something. We are looking at town. We're talking about disposition of open space tonight cost. We're talking about tax rebate cost. We're talking about real mill rate concerns cost. We're talking about school, uh, school project costs. We're talking about, um, the, 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 the challenges the economy are going to have, which are cost. And is there a way through the energy that's occurring out there around this dialogue, around this pro, this project potentially? To find cost to be borne someplace else. And we have done due diligence with our representatives and the people we have wired in at the state level to find there, could there be a cost bearing there or at the federal level? So that's why I think there might be a reason to open this up for a longer period of time of consideration so that we do a little more rather than, than just make it for lack of better, just a knee jerk reaction. I'll stop my sermon there. Thank you.
Hey, Eric?
Yeah, Jackie.
To kind of follow up with what Chris was saying, could you or Maria or Amy maybe speak to what the plan is right now for funding them? Just so that's transparent with the information we have right now?
Amy, would you mind taking that and kind of going over the proposed funding sources and the series of motions that would be required? And again, the recent discovery with the private duty fund?
Yeah, sure.
Great, thank you.
So I'll start with the discovery. It just makes it easier and kind of puts it out there as to why we're making the motions that we're making. Um, so for the last board of finance meeting, they had asked I, that I go back and review the history on each of the special revenue funds. So in doing that, the police private duty was included in that request. So in researching, um, the minutes of that fund and when it was set up, it was set up in November 2001. And the initial intent behind the fund is to have, um, a special fund outside the general fund where it was easier to budget. Or actually I shouldn't say budget because we don't budget for it in the special revenue fund, but take it out of the general fund. Um, because it was skewing the general fund budgets, um, and put it by itself so that it shows the revenues, it shows the expenses related to the private duty, and then you see the income that it's making each year. Um, there was a memo from the previous finance director, Kevin Kane, where these revenues were going to accumulate over the course of the year. And then at the end of the year, they were going to go back into the general fund. And that's how the board of finance approved the usage. So in order to stay within the limitations of that policy, we cannot just transfer money from the police private duty fund into the CNR fund. Um, we have to transfer the money from the police private duty fund into the general fund. And then the general fund would transfer, um, those, the same, the same dollar value of those savings into the capital non-recurring fund where we can purchase the, um, the equipment. Included in your packet is a breakdown of the, um, body and car camera acquisition related to its maintenance and replacement costs. So as you'll see in year one, that's pretty much everything. You have all of your equipment, um, for the actual cameras. You have your docking stations. You have your service. You have your, um, your tech plans, which is kind of similar to, um, say a phone plan when you purchase a new iPhone or something along those lines. Um, you'll have all of the, the routers, the Wi-Fi needs, things of that nature. So that's $110,606. So that's year one. And then for the up years, you have your tech plans related to your cameras and your docking stations. So if a camera breaks, you don't have to, um, eat the cost. You're paying for the service and then I'll just send you a replacement. Um, you have your onboarding storage and your professional licenses. Um, and then you have your fleet plan, which takes care of basically the maintenance within the vehicles associated with the cameras. So if we're to maintain these, um, cameras, it would be $47,214 a year over the next, over the course of the next four years. Implementation year. So, um, we're looking at year one now and looking to offset the cost in the CNR fund. Going forward, these are all operating expenses. So theoretically they should be coming out of the general fund. Um, since we are lucky enough to have the police private duty fund, we do have those savings that we can transfer each year and slowly build it into the general fund. Or, um, we're actually going to request that the board of finance look at the private duty fund and see if we can, um, tailor the policy. So that's more to come on that. So potential uses for, for funding via that fund as well and so that we can build up this money. We're not just hitting the general fund with another $47,000 expense next year when we know we're going to be in a position, um, budgets are going to be tight. Um, did I miss anything? Did that cover it?
I thought that was good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I want, I wanted to just follow up, um, make sure we didn't lose part of Chris's question, which was around exploring alternative funding sources, um, especially new funding sources that may not exist at the moment. Is it?
So if I may, uh, so the, the state has provided some funding in the past. I believe that the federal government had as well, um, years ago, but not for um, a municipality like ours. It was municipalities that may have been, um, either, uh, either under, under a decree or in, in desperate need at the time. But the state of Connecticut has funded in the past and there have been caveats to that where you would have to follow their policy. And so the last time that the police commission and, um, and the department and the board of selectmen looked at that, um, we were concerned about some of the policy aspect of that. So, uh, we're now at the point where, you know, we don't know, is there going to be funding from the state? You know, obviously in, in the pandemic that we're in, we don't know what the money situation is going to look like. The funding situation is going to look like from the state. We don't know really what, what is going to take place. So I, I certainly appreciate, um, you know, Chris, your, your question about that. I don't know of any other funding source right now. I don't know if the state will come around with some. My inclination is that the state will get to that point, uh, real quickly, that they will mandate cameras, body cameras. I don't know if there will be, uh, an, um, any funding for that. I do think though, the balancing right now, which may have been different from four or five years ago, is that the extreme accountability and transparency that is needed today. Which it was obviously very important four or five years ago, but the balance has shifted a little bit and, um, there needs to be another mechanism to maintain or increase the trust that people have with the police department. So more so, not as a prevention for, uh, poor behavior. It's more for the accountability, to be able to show people what, uh, have, has happened, the transparency aspect of that. Um, the evidence collection aspect of the body cameras. So I think the whole program in itself is extremely valuable, um, because of what it will do. The connection between our community, professional level of service that we have. And it'll, it'll keep things moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so one thing that, because we got it sort of late, um, is it's hard. I haven't really had an opportunity to go back and look at what the original plan was, which is where I thought Jackie was going before. Is what was the plan in the budget that we just passed with the board of finance? Um, see how this differs because, and that, that my second question is, can we just do kind of a change to the budget that we just passed to expedite this? Is that like normal procedure for us? Um, without, and I don't know what the board of finances input has been on this up to date. But that's just something like, I'm looking at this and it sounds like the money's coming out of the private duty fund. It doesn't impact the general fund this year. So it doesn't really impact our taxpayers. I, but I don't know how, how, how it impacts them in years two through five. It sounds like the rest of it will come out of the general fund and I'm a new, new, um, budget person. So my questions may be off base. Um, but those are kind of the things that I don't know if I have enough to make a decision. I'm, I'm definitely for body cameras and I, I, I hear what the chief is saying. The whole transparency aspect, I just think it's really vital in today's day and age, but I don't want to make a financial decision without knowing really what, what's changing. So that, that's just my position.
Maria, I can take that if you want.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Um, so as far Yeah, sure. Um, so as far as tonight goes. Under the charter, the um board of selectmen and the board of finance can make the decision to make a supplemental appropriation to the budget. So basically if the board of selectmen supports the project, they want to move forward with it, you're recommending it to the board of finance. The um, the decision as to whether it gets moved forward and actually gets done is the board of finances decision. So if you recommend it to the board of finance, it goes to their next meeting. They'll review um the recommendation. They'll take a look at the project. They'll ask their questions to the chief, Maria and myself. And then they will decide if um, if we can move forward with the project. And then the budget that was um developed this fiscal year twenty one will be amended to include that project.
And then just quickly, when does it hit the taxpayer, like the private duty fund? Um, and I don't know what we're giving up, if anything, by using the funding from that for this, right? Um, and just how does it impact the taxpayer down the line?
So for this current fiscal year and fiscal year twenty one, there would be no impact to the taxpayer. We're using money that we already have to fund the project. And so there's no um, there's no general fund impact. There's no tax impact to the taxpayer. The only time that there would be an impact to the taxpayers is when we look at the fiscal year twenty two budget. And see how much we want to impact the taxpayers. Do we want to hit the general fund with the whole forty seven thousand dollars? Do we want to use partial funding with um supplemental sources? Do we want to include it in the five year C N R payback type discussion? So those discussions will be had during um the fiscal year twenty two budget process.
We would have had discussions like that anyway, based on the current plan, right, right in that year? So.
Right. So instead of having discussions next year for the fiscal year twenty two budget where it's part of the plan, we're having the discussion early.
Okay, thanks.
Right. So I wanted to sort of take the temperature of the room and see if uh the board would be comfortable tonight recommending these fund transfers to the uh board of finance? Or if you would prefer to wait till our next meeting and give us a little more consideration.
Well, I am, and I'll move effective uh June twenty second, twenty twenty to recommend to the board of finance a transfer of up to a hundred and eleven thousand from the private duty fund to the general fund to offset the police operating expenditures.
I'll second.
Is there a further conversation?
Uh, Eric, this is Mike Payne. Um, I, I think we're in an enviable position that uh we don't need to dip into our budget to do this. We have this fund to go to and we don't have to do this. Um, and frankly, what I have found um. With my day job is putting GPS and such in our trucks has actually been more of a verification for our. Our drivers than it is an actual um protection. Um, and, and we are very fortunate. We have such good uh men and women on our uh police force.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other conversation before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, would you want to make the second one, Sean?
Sure. I further move that we uh effective uh June twenty second, twenty twenty to recommend to the board of finance a transfer of up to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars from the general fund to the capital non recurring fund. To cover the cost of the body worn cameras and car cameras.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Great. Um, so I want to, you know, I want to thank um Amy and uh the chief and Maria um for your uh expedient work on this. And uh getting this in time for our packet tonight. There's a lot of work. Um, item D is a uh proposed ordinance prohibiting the intentional feeding of wildlife. So this is something that um we started talking about late, late last summer. Back in September, the board of selectmen established a work group to draft an ordinance that would prohibit the intention, intentional feeding of uh animals such as uh bears and uh coyotes. Um, given the uh greater number of uh, of human animal uh interactions in our community. The public safety subcommittee has been working on this item. In particular, Sean Askin, uh Chris Peterson and Gary Wilcox. With support from our town manager and police chief. Um, Sean, Chris, I wanted to see uh what, what words you may have. Um, this has been uh almost a year of work.
It has. And, and again, uh, I did none of the work other than to make sure that it was talked about on the agenda. The chief, Maria. Uh, many others did, uh, did all the heavy lifting here to find other ordinances, uh, make sure that we were in line with what the state might have been proposing. Uh, earlier this year, we were actually hopeful that the state was going to do something in this legislative session. Obviously, when the world turned sideways with COVID, that did not happen. Uh, so once we were um. Obviously, we're not done managing COVID, but once there became some capacity again in town staff and at the public safety realm, we, we brought this back up. Um, and, and as we talked about and, and um from my sermon last fall. You know, this is, this is one measure that this community needs to take. This is not the solution to the bear. Or coyote or otherwise uh challenged, but um I think it's a measure that. Um, is necessary at this point. And despite my objection to ordinances overall, the community has told me loud and clear. That they want their leadership uh to address um the, the continued and increasing nature of uh interactions between bears, coyotes, our families and our pets. Um, and that we've been, we've been asked to, to, to do what we are empowered to do, to, to mitigate or to uh. Uh, protect um our citizens as best we can. Again, this is not going to uh eliminate the bears in our community, nor should it. Um, it's part of our town. Uh, many of us enjoy seeing them. Um, all this ordinance does is, is officially. Um, make it so that you should not be feeding um wildlife um and attract them into your yard and endangering either yourself, your family. Others' families or pets. It's, it's pretty simple and I think it's, it's pretty reasonable at the end of the day. Uh, one of the two challenges that I'll talk about quickly. Uh, is obviously we're talking about bird feeding and prohibiting uh some bird feeding in this, and I know that is going to be potentially. Uh, frustrating, disappointing, upsetting for many in the community, my wife included. Um, as, as we all enjoy having birds um in, in our, in our areas and, and we get that. So what we tried to do is come up with the middle of the road. Um, again, it's not an outright ban. Um, and we, we've even advised perhaps types of seed. Uh, we, we went pretty deep. Uh, to the, uh, I'm, I'm informed uh by my better half that uh the Niger or thistle seed. Uh, is not something that bears enjoy, uh, do with bitter nature. Um, and they will generally bypass uh those bird feeders because there are better opportunities elsewhere. Uh, so again, I know that's going to upset our bird watching and bird enjoying friends. Again, my, my family included. But uh, this community asked us uh and empowered us to do something about the bir- uh, the, the bears. So uh, it was a necessary step in here. We are also and have been continuing to work with our trash haulers, both pains and all waste. Um, to, to, to uh see if we can expand uh the bear proof trash barrels. Um, there's a supply and demand challenge there. Uh, um. It's a good, uh, it's a good challenge, but folks are uh taking up the haulers on those barrels. Um, so uh, we're continuing to look at where additional supply might come, et cetera. Um, so that is not included today. The other piece and chief, uh, keep me honest on this, please, is the enforcement mechanism, which was something that was really important, not only to public safety, the police department. But also uh, you know, Chris and I on, 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 from our side is to make sure that we're not tying the officer's hands. And um unilaterally or arbitrarily or unfairly um enforcing ticketing or, or interactions that don't need to happen with the public. And what I mean is, is um through the chief's advice and others, we, we attempted to craft this ordinance in such a way that the officer has discretion. Of how to um enforce the ordinance, um, starting with education first, as is often done in, in the community. Um, and the reason why I think we have such good interactions with our police department. Um, only when the situation escalates, um, it clearly becomes um a danger uh to citizens or others, or there's simply non compliance with the ordinance. Would we then escalate, um, I believe to, to the fines and the additional measures in there. Um, but again, we didn't want to come out very heavy handed uh when there was an opportunity to talk and educate our community because we think. Um, most people are, are obviously good folks and are going to want to keep each other and their families protected. So chief, did I get that right?
Uh, you did. You, I spoke very well about that. You, you certainly did. And I think that was one of the reasons why we spent so much time on the unintentional feeding aspect of this.
Right.
Because, you know, unlike accidentally doing um an excessive speed um on one of our roads. We can foresee some unintentional uh feeding of the wildlife that would be prohibited. And it's that educational aspect of it that's going to be very important um for us to be able to, to do. And that's really the intention is to um, you know, change some of the behavior so we don't attract some of these um animals that uh will become habituated with.
Thank you, chief. And you know, it's, eh, again, not a, not a, not speaking on behalf of the police department, but if you throw an apple core in the woods and a deer eats it, it. We're, we're not intending to give you a fine for that, I don't believe. But if you dump a fifteen pound bag of dog food on the corner of your property. For the coyotes that live in your neighborhood, that, that behavior is what needs to cease. Um, and that, that's really the simplest way I could explain this to folks. Uh, we're not trying to take away folks' rights or and, and not enjoy the, the becalic nature of our community. In fact, we're trying to encourage it. Um, so the folks can spend time on our wildlife parcels, can spend time in their backyards. Uh, without the interactions that I myself have had where I, I've had three bears here this week. Uh, again, not for my bird feeder, um, but because it's, it's trash day. Um, so you know, these interactions are increasing. Um, they're becoming closer and closer. Uh, there was a video just this morning from Facebook about a gentleman, I believe in Granby, where the bear walked right up to the tailgate of his truck and literally was sniffing him like a dog. Um, and only when the man noticed uh that the bear was there did the bear get startled and, and start to run away. So again, these are all cute and funny on Facebook at this point, but at, at some point, we're all going to read or hear over the scanner. That it's escalated to a situation which none of us want to have happen. And I for one. Don't think that any of us want to stand by and uh when we have the ability to do something, not to act to at least mitigate that, that exposure. So. Sorry for taking up all the airtime, but uh obviously we've spent a lot of time on this. I've, I've evolved substantially on this and, and learned a lot. Um, and again, I think we've been overwhelmingly asked by our community to address this. So.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. Chris, was there anything you wanted to add?
Uh, just a couple of points. Uh, you know, Sean, thank you for your stewardship in this and the leadership you did. You know, you're being modest. You did quite a lot. Uh, but Sean is correct that the amount of input that we got from uh both the chief and um uh Mark Riddowitz and. And um, and uh Gray Wilcox and uh it was, was, it was incredible. It, it's very interesting when you look at the amount of ordinances that we look at elsewhere. We're not the only town who were dealing with this and we're certainly, what we are, far behind the curve with many towns, uh pure towns who have dealt with similar issues. A long time ago. So that was very, that was a, that was a surprising learning to me. And some of them are very s- specific to animals. Some of them are a little more draconian and to some people's minds. I think that as Sean said, we tried to balance. I mean, this is, it, this is an imperfect solution. Okay, we can't, we can't create, we can't make the problem go away. And we can't make every, have every voice of concern. Have their doubts or concerns or reasons reasoned away. It's impossible. We were trying to do the best with what we have in the cir- current circumstances. We're addressing every party's concerns to make this town a little bit safer the way that we can. And when I think about the pure, the pure essence of the people with bird feeders. It's what you're doing. You are feeding the animal. And the traditional sense was like my parents did. Was they put out bird seed and feed during the winter time when they were concerned about those animals not having food. The birds have plenty of food in the summertime. So what you're doing is you're feeding the birds. And you're attracting them through feed and you're, you're encouraging animals and wildlife to come in. There are ways we've learned to attract wildlife and birds specifically without using food. You can attract birds to your, to your property for your enjoyment without having to induce it with food. And as Sean mentioned. You, you do want to continue to feed the birds. And there are products out there that will lessen the degree of interaction um with uh, with the, it, the animals that we're concerned with. But again, I applaud everybody who came forth, the passion. Um. Understand, folks, you know, we, we do nothing want to ruin anybody's enjoyment over the observation of wildlife. They are, Sean said, part of our fabric bar community. We've got to do something and it may be in the eyes of some people draconian or an imperfect solution. But that's, that's where we've come to. We've tried to do our level best to serve all the interests. So thank you guys.
Thank you. So while I would be uh in favor of moving this uh proposed ordinance to uh a public hearing. Uh, this has been an issue that has been uh quite frustrating to me. Um, when you look at states that are around Connecticut, um, they don't have bear human interactions um like we do. And one of the key differences is that they have meaningful state laws uh that make these interactions um much less uh likely to happen. Um, and I implore the leadership of my own political party that controls our state legislature to take this issue seriously. In the meantime, we're going to use the tools that we have, at least I hope, um locally, um to do everything that we can. Uh, to, to prevent uh a, a person uh from being harmed by one of these, these beautiful peaceful animals. But they are, they are very large and the interactions are becoming more and more common as we know. Um, so that's, that's my sermon. Um, I just wanted to see if there was any, um, anybody else had any questions or thoughts they wanted to share uh before we move toward a vote. Okay, is there a, a motion uh to schedule a public hearing uh for six P M. At the board of selectmen's regular meeting on July thirteenth, twenty twenty to solicit public comment regarding the proposed adoption of the ordinance prohibiting the intentional feeding of wildlife?
Move that.
Uh, Wendy, is that a second? Okay, further conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you all.
And just for clarification, we're going to post this as we do with all. Ordinate, um, ordinance, public hearings. Um, and again, obviously we can all push it on our Facebook pages. It will go out in town, email, news and announcements. Um, and again, we, uh, we're going to continue to be transparent with this.
Yeah, it'll be in my first selectmen's report.
Yep.
And um, and I want to highlight that this does include bird feeders and there's going to be people impacted by this. We want to, we want to hear from all of our residents on what their thoughts are.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
No, not at all. Um, item E is vacation carryover requests. Um, so vacation uh carryover requests uh that exceed ten days need to be approved by the board of selectmen. There are eight requests in the packet tonight. Um, Maria, without obviously going through individual circumstances. Um, I'm, I'm assuming that these requests were necessary because of um circumstances that really prohibited people from being able to take vacation.
Yes, Eric, that's correct. So um part of our ordinary procedure um at this point in time is that for um carryover requests in excess of ten days. Um, to come forward to the board of selectmen. Um, I did have a number of um members of the leadership team in particular. Um, who had difficulty using their time uh essentially since March due to the pandemic. Um, and so again, some staff members in particular, um, due to the nature of their work and how the pandemic affected it. Um, that really pretty much limited their ability to take any time since March. Um, so I would say that a majority um of the requests for carry forward um really are due to pandemic workload. Um, and similar to last year, um, just recommending that if you do in fact approve the carryover request. Um, that we place the limitations that staff uses that time by December thirty first. If it's not used at that time would be forfeited. Um, but then also to limit any potential um financial exposure to the town that if staff members do leave for any reason between now and then, whether it's a resignation or retirement. Um, that they would not be paid out for that unused time if they haven't used it. Um, and again, I think that allows the staff members to try and use their time within a reasonable time period without posing any financial risk for the town.
Okay, are there any questions? Uh, is there a motion effective June twenty second, uh, twenty twenty to approve the vacation carryover requests as presented in the table? And requiring uh selectman action. Um, and further to stipulate that the approved excess vacation days must be used on or before December thirty one, twenty twenty. And the unused approved excess vacation days still on the books as of January one, twenty twenty one would be forfeited. Should the employee leave service for any reason, including but not limited to retirement or resignation, they will not be paid out for the approved unused excess vacation days authorized by the board of selectmen.
I'm moved.
Is that a second, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, I saw your lips. I didn't hear you. Uh, any further conversation?
My bad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, item F are the um town managers' proposed goals. Um, in your packet are uh, are Maria's proposed goals for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, they were reviewed by the personnel subcommittee a week or so ago. They were classified as high, medium and low. It's really a document that's used to guide a significant amount of the work in the coming year. Um, from things from labor relations to economic development, financial management and, and special projects. And if the board of selectmen is um supportive, we can adopt these tonight. But I wanted to, uh, I wanted to open it up for uh, for any questions or feedback from other members.
Okay. Finally, I mean, we, I mean, we reviewed these. Obviously they're at the personnel level. They're consistent with prior years. I, I, Maria, I appreciate your thoughtfulness for. Again, putting, you know, putting these together because I think they're, they're consistent with what we've been looking for um since we moved. because I think they're, they're consistent with what we've been looking for since we moved to this former government. And again, my, my annual reminder and request, and it's equally important based on what we just approved, to make sure that this is balanced appropriately with families and the rest of life, which is why we did the high, medium, low, right? And if we need to adjust these, you know, this is, this is a living document. It's not a, we approve, go get it done. And obviously, I know, Maria, you know that. But for the voters and taxpayers out there to understand that this helps provide some transparency and some direction for what we're trying to do as a legislative body in conjunction with the, with the executive authority of the town to move things forward. So folks are wondering, what do we do with our time? Why are there committees? What are the priorities? What are we doing? This, this is a good roadmap for, for sharing why we do what we do with budgets or have discussions or do things like have the hearing that we just scheduled or otherwise. So.
Thanks, Sean. Wendy?
Yeah, I just want to point out, as a member of the Personnel Subcommittee, we did bring up that the, the public has expressed a desire to have more interaction with Maria. And Maria's, and so we see, we discussed office hours, which she put in today's agenda. So if you haven't read it, but you're watching, it is in there and that's something we're going to be working on. So just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks, Wendy. Other questions? Is there a motion effective June 22, 2020, to adopt the town manager's goals for July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021 as presented?
Second, Wendy's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The final item under Selectman Action is a proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month. Tom, I was hoping you could share your screen and put the proclamation up there. And if the board is supportive, we could authorize me to sign this as, as a board. As I'll read it, whereas the town of Simsbury is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity and equity for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, employees and business owners within Simsbury who contribute to the enrichment of our town are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer community. And whereas the Simsbury recognizes the contributions of LGBTQ people to the cultural and civic fabric of our town and remains committed to protecting their civil rights in our unified effort to forge a more open and just society. And whereas advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBTQ people throughout the nation, but there continues to be discrimination and acts of hate, making it important for towns like Simsbury to stand and show support for our residents who identify as LGBTQ. And whereas many cities and towns across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ Pride Month. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQ pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender pride and LGBTQ social movements. And whereas the pride walk along Iron Horse Boulevard serves as a symbol year round of Simsbury's commitment to diversity and inclusion. And now therefore, Board of Selectmen of Simsbury hereby declares the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the town of Simsbury and encourages everyone with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Move.
Second.
Is there any other conversation?
Thank you for doing this again, Eric, this is important.
Of course, this, again, this came as a, a request from members of our LGBTQ community. Something we did, I know last year, I don't know about previous years, but was very, very appreciated.
Yeah, and that's where I'm appreciative of it. It wasn't just a one time thing that you've, you've continued to make sure that we're all focused on this and this is part of our focus in this community. So thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to appointments and resignations. The Democratic Town Committee is recommending the appointment of Tali Gibbs to the Library Board of Trustees. She'd be filling a vacancy left by the resignation of Chris Tranberg. So is there a motion to appoint, approve the appointment of Tali Gibbs as a regular member of the Library Board of Trustees effective June 22, 2020, with the term expiring December 4, 2023?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. I'll put the, these three together. Is there a motion effective June 22, 2020, to appoint Aaron Levitt Smith as a member of the Aging and Disability Commission, with the term expiring January 1, 2024? Phil Percy Yellow as a regular member of the Clean Energy Task Force, with the term expiring December 2, 2021? And, and to reappoint Ronald Anastasio as a regular member of the Housing Commission, with the term expiring April 1, 2025?
So move.
I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes from our regular meeting on June 8? Okay, and they'll stand as presented. Are there any items under Selectmen Subcommittee or Liaison Reports?
Eric, if we could quickly, are we doing communication work?
Oh, did I skip that?
Did I, am I out of order?
You're out of order.
I am, I am out of order, sorry, that's the next thing in my packet. Anyway, I'll get, I'll bring that up in a minute.
So I, Wendy, please.
Sorry. Just, I just wanted to comment on the Board of Ed. I didn't watch it when it happened, I had to watch it after it happened. But obviously, it was held on June 9th, so there was a lot of discussion about the Equity Council and people weighing in. And one of the points that was made was, and I can't remember who made the point, but that we didn't have to react to what was happening, that we had already been proactive for, for other reasons, but we were proactive to have this in place at the time. And that in tomorrow's meeting, Sue Lemke is doing, coming out with a statement on the Equity Council, what they're doing. And then the other thing is, there's still no decision on the, from the return to school, to Simsbury Schools Task Force, as far as what's happening. They're meeting, they're waiting for the state to weigh in, so that's it.
Thank you, Wendy. I have one item that I wanted to raise. So a number of months ago, the Board of Selectmen asked the Personnel Subcommittee to recommend how to proceed with the town manager's contract, which comes up for renewal early next year. And I just wanted to give an update on the process. So going back about six weeks ago, we started soliciting feedback from the community. We received feedback from eight people. Of those eight people, six recommended moving forward with a contract extension. Two of the people who provided input were department heads and were both, were both very positive about extending our contract. There were three other people who were members of boards and commissions, who were also supportive of an extension. And two were members of the public at large, who were not supportive of an extension. We heard one of those letters tonight. Ultimately, the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee is to move forward with a contract extension. And I just wanted to see if Sean or Wendy wanted to share any of your thoughts about how we landed there. Why open it up for other questions?
Wendy, you want to go first?
Oh, just put me on the spot.
No, I just, I always open my big mouth, I figured I'd.
No, I just, I, you know, just being new to the board, I feel that Maria is doing a really good job technically. She's very professional and we are taking into consideration the comments from some in the, in the town to, to, you know, make sure certain things are covered. And as far as the priorities go, they seem to be in line. We were all asked to weigh in on the priorities as a board and to rate what we thought was important to us. So that was all considered in, you know, her goals for the coming year. And I think it's, it's prudent for the town to continue with Maria over the next three years, to follow that path.
Thanks, Wendy. Sean?
Yeah, Wendy, well said. You know, I've been part of this board for a long time. I've seen a lot of different styles and ways. And when we, when we passed years ago, the charter revision to have a professional management in town, I had an idea of what it looked like, I think a lot of us did. But as, you know, as I said last meeting, I think the combination of both Maria and Eric has been one that set this community up for success. I've seen Maria work extremely hard for our community. She is a resident of our community. She's a member of our community and, and exercises professionalism at all time. She takes feedback well, she's willing to learn, she's willing to take others' input. She's a process junkie, she likes to do things the right way, the ethical way and, and in an efficient way, which, which is really, really awesome for all of us as taxpayers and as members of this board and members of the community. You know, there's always a difference of opinion, there's always a difference of perspective. You know, but at, at the same time, I think Maria, in a very short period of time, has, has not only become a member of this community, but embodied what I think this community prioritizes, values and takes very seriously. And, and you know, both the public comments that we have from her here, the individual conversations that I've had, whether the things that she thinks about, the excitement that she has for, for making this town even better. I wish I could convey that enthusiasm that, you know, the five of us, the six of us get to see on a regular basis. You know, she gets excited about the budget, she gets excited about, you know, all the stuff that, that, that makes this place run. And, you know, but, but from the professional side, she executes extremely well. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, not only do we, are we rehiring and keeping Maria as our town manager, we're also keeping her team, which I think is a, is a new concept for us, if you think about it. You know, in the past, it was a first select person and we had the professionals and there was a, you know, there was a divide that wasn't a package deal. In the professional management space, often the finance director, the deputy town manager, the town manager are, are packaged deals in a lot of ways because, you know, they, they work with each other every day. And we're very, very blessed with the, the, the level of talent that we have in both the town manager's position with Maria, the finance director position with Amy Meriwether, and Melissa Appleby is, as our, as our deputy. You know, we've got three intelligent, strong leaders that, that each could run the, run a community on their own. So I, I think we're in a really, really outstanding place. So I know not everybody agrees with my assessment and that's okay. You know, we can have a difference of discussion and opinion. But I think the important thing is that, you know, I've seen both privately and publicly how hard Maria works for this community. And, you know, her performance reviews have been transparent, folks can see them, folks can see the feedback that we've given. You know, Wendy brought up the office hours, Maria quickly embraced that. You know, and I, I think, I think she's set up well to continue to lead this community for, from, from the town manager side for another three years.
Thanks, Sean. I'll just add, I, you know, I, I took office two and a half years ago and I was, didn't know it at the time fully, but I, the most important meeting that I was part of since joining our government was actually before I was formally sworn in. It was when we were, we were interviewing town manager candidates and ultimately we, we selected Maria. It's just a critical, critical decision and I think she was also in a unique position in that many of the other department had, had, there had been a number of retirements. So within a very short period of time, we hired Maria as well as much of her leadership team. The first two years for sure has been a time of, of growth and adjustment, not just for her team, but for much of town staff. And I feel like we are really getting to a place where her team is, is clicking in, in a way that is elevating, you know, the service they deliver to a higher level of performance. That's not to say that there aren't continued opportunities as, you know, I know the Board of Selectmen has continued to invest in executive coaching as well as 360 feedback reviews so she can continue to get feedback from her direct reports and others to, you know, continuously improve. But I am wholeheartedly in agreement that, you know, Maria has accomplished a phenomenal amount in a short amount of time, is a consummate professional and I endorse extending her contract. So I, I wanted to open it up for, for any other thoughts, anyone wanted to add. I would say that the, the next step, if the board is supportive, is that the Personnel Subcommittee would work with Maria on drafting a, the proposed language for a contract extension that would then come back to this group to be vetted and ratified. Is there anything else anyone wanted to add? Is the board, you know, directionally supportive of asking the Personnel Subcommittee to work on this with Maria? Or maybe I should ask for a formal motion?
Yeah, I move that we, we empower the Personnel Subcommittee to update and draft the contract for final adoption by the Board of Selectmen.
I'd second that.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor? I'm sorry. Okay.
No, I just wanted to in full support.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, that motion.
I voted, I voted yes.
Thank you. Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you for communication.
Yes, sorry, I, I didn't mean to jump the gun there and I did have one thing I want to address otherwise. No, no, you're good. So in a, a, an exciting time, but also a, a somewhat, somewhat sad time for our community in that Kevin Kowalski, our beloved Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Director, is finally, I'm told, retiring, although as I said to Kevin at the Public Safety Meeting, I'll believe it when I see it. We, we have a communication this evening from Maria on the appointment of Michael Berry to be a successor for the Emergency Management Director. Let me just first address that and then I'll go back to Kevin. So this is, this is an important item, obviously, as, as you folks know, but make sure that the residents understand when the EOC is activated, when there is a crisis, when there is an emergency, this is the individual, previously Kevin, Mike going forward, that runs point for us in the Emergency Operations Center and works with all of the empowered parties, the town manager, the police department, fire, ambulance, ever source, the state, to make sure that we're responding effectively, efficiently and safely to, to whatever happens, whether it be COVID, hurricane, snowstorm, you know, you name it, all the stuff that we've had. And, you know, we've been very blessed that we've had Kevin in that position for a very long time. Mike has been part of the Public Safety Subcommittee and has been part of the leadership team for a, a long time as well. And I, for one, have full confidence in his ability to, to keep up the standard that Kevin has provided with us. Kevin, as the story goes, I believe went to high school with my mother. So he's, he's the definition of a townie. Kevin has, has served our country and our, our community for a long time. We all give him a hard time for his longer, he's even longer winded than I am at some of the meetings. But there are, there are few in this community that work as harder, as passionately as Kevin has over the years in so many different capacities, whether it be within the Fire Department, as a Fire Marshal or as our Emergency Management Director. I, I'm pretty sure, and Jackie, you can verify for me, that the man didn't sleep for the days that we were under the, the, the snowstorm 10 years ago and the shelters were open. You know, Mark Massaro from EverSource shared a story that one of his first interactions with Kevin was, was Kevin called him in the middle of the night and he was on a boat in town because the river was flooded and he was asking Mark if he was okay to put his guys on that boat, the EverSource guys, to shut the power off to a house so that they could go make it safe and save residents. So here, yeah, here's Kevin in the middle and I, in a boat, dealing with the electricity, keeping people safe. This is, this is all the stuff that happens with our emergency responders that, that folks might not understand. And again, Eric, if you'll indulge me, I'll quickly tell the story that I told that at Public Safety, my first, first interaction with Fire Marshal Kowalski was at the young, young age of 10. Much like many misguided youth, making campfires was fun. And I did so in a, in a concrete area behind the batting, the batting protection there in Henry James, down the path that goes up to Michael Lane there. Again, it was a safe area, it was concrete, but we had little rocks around anyway. So mom found out and mom was raising money for, for DARE at the time and had made relationships with our police department and in time, Raney Hanson, the youth officer. So Officer Hanson came down, picked me up and my friend and took us to the station. We went to booking and in walked Fire Marshal Kowalski, who explained to us the dangers of playing with fire. Not to scare us, not to, not to play a joke, but something that taught myself and my friend a lifelong lesson of understanding to be safe and not a lifelong lesson of understanding to be safe and, and not do foolish things and also have respect for authority because, you know, these guys did it the right way. And I'm just one story of probably hundreds or thousands that, that Kevin has impacted in a way. So I just wanted to share that anecdote that, you know, Kevin's been an important part of my life as an individual for a long time and it's been an honor to work from, work with him in this capacity and public safety and from the Board of Selectmen side. So we're talking when we're out of COVID here or when the new normal comes, how can we properly honor Kevin? Who has decades of service. So we'll be back to you with that. But I just wanted to make sure that that was on everybody's radar, that the, we're moving into a new chapter in town.
Thank you Sean. That's great reflection.
And quickly, Eric, I promise this is it. You know, I, I had an opportunity with Wendy and, and others to attend the Black Lives Matter protest that was downtown. And I was, I was so pleased to, to, to see the interactions with our community and our police officers. I don't know exactly what was referenced earlier, if that was true or not. But what I did see of the chief and his leadership and the officers was the same interaction that I see with the chief at an ice cream shop, that I see with the chief at Fitzgerald's, that I see with the chief here, walking around, talking to people, that wonderful happy smile that he has on his face, that authenticity of being a caring guy that he is, taking, he was posing for pictures with folks. So the chief and the police department I saw down there is one that everybody should be proud of.
Thanks Sean. Anything else under communication or otherwise before we adjourn?
I promise I'm done.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody.